We're going to be changing the order a bit tonight. We're going to be in regular session first and then go into work session later. And thanks to Ms. Ashley and Ms. Sarah, we will be staying in the same room the whole time, so we don't have to get up and trips around. So we're in the regular session now. First up is citizens' appearance. Persons wishing to speak will sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals should be limited to two minutes each. An individual speaker's time may be extended for an additional two minutes with the approval of a majority of the council members present. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they signed up. No personal attacks. Many speakers should be made against any member of the council, the mayor, individual, group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations, sorry, from the city council due to the Texas Open Meetings Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut and break in and make a request to the mayor of the council if they would like to extend the speaker's time to an additional two minutes. Just as a check, I've got two people signed up to speak. Is there anybody else that needed to sign up? Seeing none, we tend to be a little flexible on that anyway.
You haven't been kidding me this whole time, have you?
Jim, it's not April 1st. It's real, it's not April 1st.
Well, I was making sure.
Mr. Mizlang, I just went through my really long spiel about citizens' appearance. Did either one of you two want to speak tonight?
Not seen.
All right. Our first speaker then is Mr. Mark Smits. Mark?
Where do you want me to go with?
I think down to the microphone down there. And state your name and your address, please.
My name is Mark Smits, and I'm at 102 West Wind Drive. Good evening. Thank you for giving me time to address the council on a subject that's very important to me. I'm the son of a Vietnam veteran who also proudly served the U.S. Army from 1979 to 1983. I was in the Corps of Engineers, and I served at Fort Sill, Oklahoma. I'm here tonight to talk about the Veterans Monument being planned for Capella. First, let me say that I'm thrilled to learn that Capella is investing in honoring veterans. As we just finished celebrating Memorial Day, I'm sure all of you understand the critical role that veterans have played in building and defending this great country of ours. Paying tribute to our veterans fits perfectly with the image and the culture that I believe represents the city of Capella. This decision makes me even prouder to live in Capella. The council is faced with the decision on where to locate this monument. I've heard that there is a small minority voice that would like to see it located at Andy Brown Park. I'm also told that the logic for this location is due to the perception that the location would improve foot traffic. I could not disagree more with the logic or the location. When a veteran raises his right hand and swears to defend the country, that veteran is writing a blank check payable to the United States of America for an amount up to and including the cost of his or her life. A monument expressing this city's gratitude for our fellow citizens willing to risk everything deserves a special location with a singular focus. It should not be co-located in a park designed for recreation. Anything less than that is a failure to understand the importance these people have had on guaranteeing our freedom. The great Abraham Lincoln once famously said, "Don't worry when you are not recognized, but strive to be worthy of recognition." I ask the council not to worry about if this monument will be visited. I can assure you that it will be visited because it is worthy of that recognition. The monument should be the feature attraction, not a side show. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being with us, and thanks for your comments. Our second speaker is Ms. Michelle LaFountain. Michelle?
My name is Michelle LaFountain. I live at 411 Rolling Hill Circle. I kind of echo a lot that Mark said, but I have this real burden on me, to use my mother's words, about what the plaza slash monument will look like, as well as where it will be. I really hope that we don't make this some kind of a commercial competition, and people, you know, "Whoa, whoa, whoa." I don't think that's appropriate to what we are trying to achieve. We saw some beautiful drawings by an obviously professional, what do you call them, landscape designer, I guess, that I thought were both beautiful. I liked the second one more, but that's only because... Anyway, I implore you not to commercialize it. I implore you, please, do not make it a contest. Just make it something that your veterans can be proud to visit and bring their families. And commercializing it and putting it in a park where kids are going to play on, hunk gum and spray paint and graffiti and dogs and their things. I implore you to consider that the town behind here is the most appropriate place for it. And I believe we already have some really good drawings, and it's, I don't know, it's almost kind of insulting that you guys don't like what we've already seen and really liked. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, and thanks for being here. Is there anyone else that came in late that would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to Agenda Item 3. Mary, would you like to...or is this a Bob item? Okay. Consider approval of an ordinance amending the current short-term rental ordinance found in Chapter 9, Article 9.9-29, Section 9-29-14, in the City of Capella's Code of Ordinances to amend any reference to short-term rentals and replace it with the long-term lodging houses, and by adding the definition of lodging houses and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Mayor, do you want to go ahead and read the other one, and I'll talk twice.
You're going to talk to both of them?
Yes.
All right. Item number four is consider approval of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances, Chapter 12, Article 30S or SUP, Special Use Permits, defining and establishing special use permit requirements for lodging houses, short-term rentals, STRs, bed and breakfast, boarding homes, hostels, vacation homes, and corporate housing within the SF 7, SF 9, SF 12, SF 18, SFED, and H districts, and provide for text change and definition amendments and authorizing the mayor to sign.
Thank you. Mayor and council, real briefly, back in your last meeting, last regular meeting, you took up this item, and we had a zoning case, and Mary presented that, and we passed that unanimously, which is Agenda Item Number 4, and instructed me to bring forth the ordinance. And as part of doing that, we also looked at the definition of STR and our STR regulations. And so, in order for these things to kind of talk with each other as they're applied over the next few months, we changed the term "short-term rental" in the regulations to match the lodging house, which was the matchup from the zoning cases that was presented to you at our last regular meeting. So these are housekeeping matters. We normally would have brought these to you at our first meeting in June. However, the legislature passed in 29, which requires from now on, on zoning cases, there's special notice requirements that have to be made. However, in that past legal...so it'd be two weeks, Thursday it was signed, and the following day by Governor Abbott, and so it became effective immediately under the House and Senate, having received more than two-thirds majority in both houses, so it became effective immediately upon its execution. There's provision in there that all those new notice requirements hold to effect June 1st. So as a result of the mayor or the governor signing the statute...
Thank you, Bob.
And Wes said it was okay for him to sign. So I had asked Mike to put these on your special meeting tonight, so he can go ahead and get these two ordinances enacted, so we didn't run into a possible challenge that notice, that new notice requirement had not been forthcoming and published in the newspaper prior to their adoption. So this would make it street legal under the new statute, and would mean we would not have to start over, so I would urge you to pass it. One of the things that's come up is, in working on this issue, which most of you know has been a long drag for us for the last five years, working on these short-term rentals, you know, we continue to look at things like the corporate housing, the hospitals, bed and breakfast as well, so we need to participate in some regulations back to, and this will be a future. But the only thing we're willing to serve about tonight is the term "short-term rental" versus lodging. Staffs here, obviously, answer any questions you have, or if you have anything else.
I would like to add that these could have been done under consent agenda, but since it was a special call session, I decided in view of transparency to make them regular sessions so that we could ask questions, and that would force Bob to be up there and talk to us. So, anyway. Anybody have any questions for Bob?
You can take both of them, as items 3 and 4, if you chose to, or you go around separately or...
Mark?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Items 3 and 4.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Hinoza Smith. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Walker, Hinoza Smith, Gerald John Neville-Sill, in favor? None whatsoever.
That gets you really messed up.
They're off your groove.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob. I'd like to ask that we suspend the rules on Item Number 5 and take Item D first, since several of our audience members are here to listen to D, and that probably comes as a shock to Jessica, so thank you very much. We'll take D first. That's a discussion regarding the Veterans Memorial.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that. So tonight's conversation will be brief. It's really a follow-up discussion from the last time I spoke with you in work session on April 25th. So I've heard a few things from that session. The feedback was that council was interested in us exploring the idea of a design contest, and to come back to you to have that discussion on whether we wanted to pursue that contest or not. So really, tonight, I'm seeking the answer to one question, and does council want us to pursue a design contest for the Veterans Memorial? So just a little bit of information, since the last time we met, I did have a conversation with a professor of landscape architecture regarding a student design competition. We were hopeful that we could potentially work with, you know, maybe a couple universities, a couple professors or classes, and have this be a semester-long, professor-led project. What we learned was, from a timing perspective, that's really not possible. Fall syllabuses have already been finalized, and students have already registered, and so very, very few professors will amend those once those are done. There's also some accreditation requirements for these programs, and unless our specific project met a very targeted, specific accreditation requirement for that semester, they also would not be interested in picking up our project. So the professor I spoke with said, really, the only option that she would pursue would be an open national contest, so kind of wide open to everybody. And then a few other rules we know. She just mentioned the specificity with which we would need to write technical specs in terms of location, elements, deliverables, timeline. Numbers of designs will accept price money. All of that must be laid out to a very high degree of detail. So those, that's some of the exploration that we've done up to this point, so I'd like to open it up for discussion amongst the council, or any questions that I can answer.
I mean, for me, I always thought it would be an open competition that would not partner with any school, anything like that. You know, if a student wanted to do it, that's fine. If, you know, a professional wanted to, you know, enter, pick a submission, that's fine. But, you know, as she mentioned, we've got to lay out the technical criteria, and one of the most important things would be the location, because you draw a lot of information from the surroundings, do site analysis when you do designs of memorials like this. So, I mean, if we want to go down that road, then I think we have to make a decision as a council where it goes first. And, you know, we're hearing some different feedback from people. I mean, I can see the validity for both. You know, my personal preference is back here. I think that's the ideal spot, but I'm just one person, so...
In terms of determining the technical criteria that kind of serves the basis for soliciting all that, I mean, can we identify that? Can we all identify the technical criteria, the design parameters that they would require?
So the recommendation would be to hire a consultant to help us write the technical specs. Since we don't have a member of our community experiences team that can write technical specs, we would be looking to work with somebody to help us get that done.
Can we do this, even if we use the already submitted design, without coming up with those specs? I mean, do we have to have those specs regardless?
No, I don't think so. I mean, if we feel comfortable as a group with the design we have in front of us, then we don't have to go any further, you know? We can move into, you know, design development, and sign a contract with the designer. I'm not saying that his was not a good solution. It was just one solution. But it was also, I think, appropriate. I think the scale was right. And in terms of budget, you know, from what I saw, it would probably be the appropriate scale for something like this in Capella. You know, it's not going to be too grandiose, but it's, you know, also not going to be just a little plot. You know, it's going to be a nice statement, I think, from what I've seen. But I just didn't want to, you know, to limit us to one person's vision, but then, if you guys, if you think it's good and it meets our purposes, then by all means, no need to spend the additional money for a competition, and, you know, we can put that more towards the construction and, you know, refining the design.
Don?
Hey. So I think your assessment is fair. Do we need to decide on the location? Is that where we really need to start? Whether we accept this, what's already been proposed or not? Is that really the first step?
Yeah, I think location, yes, absolutely.
So do we need to discuss that first?
I would say so. That's your driving factor right there.
I think this location is good, just based on it has more of a singular focus. This space has not been activated probably to the level that originally was intended. I mean, for some obvious reasons, we outgrew the space or whatever, so that would be a good activation.
There's no road there, is what happened.
I'm sorry?
There's no road there, is what happened.
Yeah, right. I think I mentioned this last time. I really thought when we were talking about Veterans Memorial, or I think that's how it's originally sort of pinned, I was thinking it was going to be a small area back here. The fact that, at least the design we've been, that's been pitched so far, is a much more, I say grandiose, I don't know if grandiose is the right, but it's much more all-encompassing of that whole space, which I think was an unexpected but pleasant development in the process, that it was going to take up this entire, the entire space. So I think this is, this is a good option, I think, versus Andy Brown. I do, maybe I'm overselling this, but access, especially people who happen to have mobility issues, I think this is a more accessible location than down in Andy Brown, down, you know, down in the, sort of in the Grand Mall or Grand Plaza, whatever we call that, that area. So I think this is more accessible. So I would be in favor of this location.
John's first. John?
Jessica, I know last time we were going to try to reconvene with the focus group. What was the status on that?
So we have some focus group members out of town, so we didn't want to reconvene until everybody could attend. But what we were really looking for direction first on is pursue a design competition or no, because then the focus group would reconvene to confirm those elements was going to be the timeline. So we were, so step one was for council to confirm that we are going to pursue a design contest, and step two would be reconvening the focus group and the Parks and Recreation Board to confirm the program or the elements of the...
I think what Mark was saying is probably right, that depending on what the location is, that could kind of dictate as to the design, or whether it is a competition, or even the one that we currently have. I know they only focused on back there. But mainly, it was because of the focus group that, I don't know, I had the sense that it wasn't all consensus as to the location, and they had different ideas as to the location, different design, and that's the sense that I got. So that's why it was asking to go back and see if the focus group...
So for the first meeting of the focus group, we had 100% consensus on the plaza as the location, and the feedback that was brought up from those focus group members is how the scope was created for the consultants. So the design that you saw on the 25th, every element of that design was created by the focus group with feedback from the Parks and Recreation Board. When we reconvened the second meeting of the focus group, there was one individual who then proposed Andy Brown East as an alternate location option, and one of that explored for it.
Brianna?
One?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, you said one.
At the focus group, sir.
Okay. But beyond the focus group, I think we've got multiple emails, more than just one person actually saying that they had, you know, veterans as well, too. And whether they attended the focus group or not, I don't know, but we got multiple emails saying that they're looking for alternate locations as well.
Sure, I believe council did get those. I was not copying all those ones.
I can forward them to you. I'm just kidding.
Brianna?
These are my, I just have some thoughts. This area was activated at one time prior to Old Town, so I wanted to just mention that, because this was kind of where we used to have a lot of our activities, and then I know Parks and Rec purposefully and intentionally moved things so that we could have the foot traffic in Old Town. But this used to be a place where we did a lot. It was always instilled in me, or said to me, from former city managers and other council members, that this is the front of Town Center, not the back. I, again, there can be...
No, that's...
Right?
I've been told the same story.
It's always been the front, and that was why, and that's why we, prior councils designed it the way it was designed, was because this was the front. I'm just throwing out some thoughts, just to take into consideration. Am I saying, I think this would work? I just want to be thoughtful of, like, this is the front. I think that I would hate for this not to also be used for other activities, and we have to be thoughtful of that. Is this going to no longer be, will this only be an area for the Veterans Memorial, and yet, if we do it at such a large scale, because when you mentioned the grandiose, it was a little bigger than what I expected, then we wouldn't want to have festivals out here, obviously, because then it wouldn't show the respect that we need to, to our veterans. So I want to be mindful of that. Do I think it's a good location? I do, considering that we've got, it's a place that people can come to, it's quiet, people can walk around. We also have the police memorial here, we've got the police department, we've got the fire department, so I like it. I think I like the location. I actually would want something that's probably a smaller scale, and then I want to be thoughtful of where it's placed, so that this area is, like, are we ever going to use it for anything else? I want to be thoughtful of that, right? Because we, right, we heard we don't want to have it at the park, because we want that to be recreational, and that may not fit, so are we looking to turn this entire area into a Veterans Memorial that won't be used for anything else? I just, I'll throw that out there. But I do like the location.
So going back way before any of us were here...
Yes.
That was originally going to be the front to the Town Center. There was also supposed to be roadway coming through, and I think it was when the elementary school was put in that that all changed.
So, yesterday, I don't know, I moved here after the elementary school was there, and was always told that the way that this building was designed, and what you see here in the sun's front was always meant to be the front, which is why then the sun's aisle was placed the way it was, and this whole area was designed around it being the front.
I think succeeding activities have kind of...
Agreed.
It's not the front anymore.
Agreed. But that's the same story you heard, too, right?
The whole story was the South Lake Town Plaza, is what it was before there was the South Lake Town Plaza. When the elementary got located there, it kind of blitzed that whole idea, and we basically delivered the South Lake Town Plaza plan to South Lake. That's the story that I've been told.
You're the leader, you should have come in here. Don?
Hey, a follow-up question, Jessica. So Brianna's point is valid, like, Capella connected, what would we, I guess we would relocate that? We wouldn't use, like, it's like that's Veterans Plaza, we would probably do something like, actually, you're Capella connected, right? But we would relocate...
I was going to comment, you go back.
We would relocate events such as that. I don't know what else we're doing, but that's, I guess that would be the thought, if you even thought, you probably haven't even thought about that.
No, we have not thought about that. I guess we would have to see what it is, right? What the memorial is looking like. If it takes up the entire plaza, obviously, we wouldn't do that. But that would just have to be part of the discussion going forward, is where's the appropriate place to do that gathering?
So that, and I guess, what else have we done back there?
So we're still, so weekend before last, we are still using the far southern end closest to the Cause of the Library. They did their summer meeting kickoff there on May 20th, so they just use kind of that southern circular lope down there. So I still think that sort of use is appropriate if we stick to a similar design that council saw on the 25th. The monument, the whole Memorial Plaza is really located on this northern section, which potentially could grow and expand. That was discussion in the focus group. But right now, we're, we activated the southern end, and sometimes the YMCA uses the southern as well.
Jim?
Well, first, I apologize for not raising my hand earlier. I was just rude. You know, I think a Veterans Memorial is such a sacred thing, and it memorializes such a sacred sacrifice or service. And I like the idea of locating it kind of in our seat of governance, because it's public service of the highest order, and it's right here in our seat of governance, which is, to me, not as frivolous as locating it in a park. Now, I'd be really worried that no matter where we put it in a park, that any event out there, this would be an easier place to control for public events honoring veterans, whereas a park, you know, would we really shut down the entirety of Andy Brown West for a Veterans Memorial service, just because of that one location? You know, could we control that? If some dog comes running across and some guy's yelling at his dog, come back? So just, I just think this would be a, just a better way to honor them, and a more, a more serious way of honoring them, by locating them in a, in a public place that is associated with a seat of governance and honors their public service. So I would definitely favor this location. I was just kind of concerned when I asked Mark about the... when I asked Mark about the, and Jessica about the design, I, I was just concerned about, you know, I liked the academic idea, because it sounded like it wasn't gonna cost us anything. So I'm not that excited about having a really expensive design contest, but I'm not also the guy that's gonna jump at the first thing that's thrown at me either. So I, I hear what you're saying. So, uh, as far as the location goes, I, I really would not want to put it in a park, and I think this would be a far more, a serious place to put it.
Jessica, could you address the design competition cost a little bit?
Um, so that, that's still one of the unknowns. So we would be working with a consultant just to help us write the specifications, because it's, it's all about how the things are written, based on the quality and the level at which the submissions you would get. Um, so from the discussions I have, um, there's not a lot of professional consultants who would want to do any sort of pro bono work. So we would have to offer prize money. Um, and if you explore kind of national level design competitions from all over the world, there is prize money on 90-plus percent of those. And so, especially for a, a smaller project like this, we would need to be offering some sort of a cash prize. That would be up to, to council to kind of guide us on that. I saw everything from a thousand dollars to 10,000, 20,000 dollars, just to point out on the project, what might catch your eye.
And the other item, timing.
Correct. So, um, so if we were to say yes to a design contest, so that is where a lot of unknowns factor in, in terms of writing the specs, getting it advertised, um, arranging a, a group of folks who would actually choose the design. Um, once we select a design, if we do find a design that we like on the first time it's advertised, then we would still have to find a consultant to, um, take what is a preliminary conceptual design and convert it to construction documents that are then bidable. So we would be hiring another consultant to do that. Um, then we would bid, and then obviously go to construction, and then you'd sort of be at the, you know, be in the normal construction timeline of ordering things. And depending upon, the design will drive, or start, the design competition would decide the materials. Um, depending on the materials, we could be waiting on those. So what I would hesitate to do is guarantee a November 2024 timeline, just because there's so many unknowns there. If we choose not to do a design competition, then there's another path forward. If the, if the design you saw from Olson Studio is not what we want to do, we can engage them to do additional designs, we can engage another consultant, another consultant, you know, in the DFW area to do more concepts, um, as well as reconvening the focus group and park board as well, and I could bring those back, too. That one, I would feel more comfortable shooting towards that November 2024 timeline, because we're cutting out the competition timeframe.
Thank you. John?
I think there was a mention about two designs, right? But I thought we only saw one.
You did. You saw the design that was selected by the focus group, and then that was recommended also by the park board. So those two groups saw the two designs. They both landed completely independently of each other on the same design, and that's the design we chose to, to show to council.
Well, I'd like to see the other designs, to see what it was, as well, just to compare, um, see if there's anything that could have been added to the other one, if, if that's possible. But aside from that, we talked about the funding, the stores.
Mm-hmm.
Can you kind of touch upon that?
Yeah, sure. I, um, a while back, we talked about Hotel Motel. I asked Bob for an update on an opinion on, about the use of Hotel Motel tax. Uh, and as he walked through that translation, basically, I can't build, or we can't use the funds to actually build the monument, but we can use the funds to help continue to maintain, uh, maintain the, the monument. Um, I say this respectfully to our financial condition, whatever y'all decide your, a budget that you would like to use, we have the ability to fund the monument. You have flexibility. So I think we have, I think right now, we have set aside how much?
350,000.
350.
We've already expended some, so I was on the...
Well, for the design. So let's just say, for the sake of discussion, 300,000. My point being is, you have flexibility. Let's say, let's say you choose not to go to the design competition tonight, because that, we need to hear kind of a thumbs up or thumbs down on which way you'd like to go on that. But let's say that you don't. Getting, getting you the other design, we can send that out to you immediately, you know, I think. Do we have it in a graphic presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, and, and quite frankly, this can be an ongoing conversation for the next little while. Um, and if the council would say to the committee respecting that you've made a recommendation, and the parks board's made a recommendation, to Mark's point, we'd like to possibly hire another firm, take the same spec, because they've already kind of laid out the program, right? They've already said, this is what we'd like to see, and that was Olson's translation. You could hire another architect, not have them ever see that other translation, and they could come up with some other design independent, because of program, unless there's some reason to change, um, the program, and see what that second architect gives you. I mean, you can get, you can get as many different opinions as you like, as far as the design consultant is concerned, but the bottom line on all that is going to be, at some point, the council is going to have to decide, you have the recommendation, they can meet again and talk about that, but you're gonna still have to make a decision about where to locate it.
Sure. So...
You're, you're up.
So, initially, when I talked about this, and part of the reason why I did say is that, you know, a lot of places that I've visited, it's just at a location, isolated place where not people don't visit. And I thought it's just kind of, you know, needed a place where people would visit, and we're trying to make the next generation learn about the, the war veterans and so on, and putting it somewhere where people don't visit us just didn't make sense. I get the points about where you want a isolated place for, as an honor, and I, and I get the point that's been made about the, of the Andy Brown Park, if we're having events, if they're having, you know, are we stopping everybody from doing something? I get that. And I also get that the whole point was, having a focus group was, we wanted them, we want those that are in the focus groups actually come up with the idea, and whether it be the design or the location, and we want to follow that. The, the issue came up when there were a number of people, not just one, I, I don't know if it was just the one that focus group, that he participated, and then it just turned out to be him raising a voice, and there's a whole bunch emails and, you know, voices that we heard. That, that was the issue, right? And for me, that, that was the issue. Are we actually doing it where majority, and is there a conflict? Then do we need to actually, actually look into other locations such as Andy Brown, because there are a lot of people that actually visit Andy Brown? That was the whole purpose. It's not, the idea wasn't for council to drive as to the location and/or the design, but to facilitate hopefully what the focus group actually meaning. That was the whole idea. So I, I don't want this to turn into the council overruling, or, or, you know, making the decision, decision on behalf of the focus group. Whatever the focus group, I just want to verify that it is, because, again, we have more than just one person talking about alternate location, alternate design. I just want to make sure on that part. That's, that was my opinion. And, and that's the reason why I said maybe we need to reconvene with the focus group to make sure that this is exactly what it is. And, and just like I mentioned last time, by all means, if, if they all say, yeah, you know what, this is it, then we might not have to change anything.
Well, we were committed to getting the focus group back together. We said we would and are going to. The design competition and conversation came up in between, and that's the reason why we're back to you tonight. It isn't because we're not gonna bring them back together. We are. We just need to know what we tell them, as far as this particular issue, because it has branches.
And honestly, Mark's idea about design competition, to bring about the best, I guess, design port, wherever the location might be, that is a great idea, as well as doing a fundraising, which is a great thing, right? I mean, you know, it costs us to do less and have people actually contribute. I know a number of other organizations, they probably want to participate and contribute to the design as well, uh, of the memorial plaza. I know they did that, they did that at other number of cities' memorial plazas. So I thought, you know, that's, that's also a good possibility of having the city put up less money with fundraising. Of course, it, it might take longer, but...
And keep in mind, part of the, the original goal was to have this thing done by November of this year.
I get it.
So that was, that was part of what was driving the entire decision process.
I, I don't know why this year was more, but, you know...
Well, because it was possible. All right. Mark, you're looking at something awfully hard. What's...
I'm designing.
He's, he's got on his architect hat.
Yeah.
You're designing?
Well, just if it was down at, you know, at Andy Brown, that, someplace that you could keep it separate and still have that reverence.
Something? Brianna?
I didn't ask, oh, I'd love to see you do some.
Just a little bit, you know?
It's a red line on a piece of paper.
Quick, quick question. Maybe I missed this, so apologies if I'm asking a question again. But with the design that we saw, what parameters, if any, were provided? Just because, and, and I say that because, like, it was, it was a lot bigger than I expected, and so, and I think I heard the same thing from Don, that I don't know what the word is, I don't know. So I'd love to know, like, okay, so this seemed to be the location that people liked. What parameters were provided to get a shot?
Focus group, number one meeting of, so the, the elements of the design you saw came directly from the feedback from the focus group members. So it emerged pretty quickly that they wanted all six branches of the military represented. That was a non-negotiable. Um, so we looked at pictures of different memorials from all around the Metroplex, a couple from around the country. They kind of decided that they like a blade wall concept with some sort of medallion representing six individual branches. So that emerged very, very quickly from the focus group. Uh, the next most important thing were flags. They wanted the American flag included, and, and, um, they preferred to have all the military branch flags included and flown at all times. Uh, that then drove a conversation on lighting. You know, if you have a flag, it must be lit properly. Um, and then, so that sort of talked about celebrating service. Then the conversation turned a little more somber into remembering those that we lost. And that's where the idea of, we also want this to be a place where we can go to remember, remember those folks who kind of paid that ultimate sacrifice. And that's where the remembrance zone, uh, concept emerged of, oh my gosh, it'd be great if there was a battlefield cross, or something where we could go quietly and silently reflect. And so that's how we kind of emerged with two different areas, sort of a, um, education piece on military service, and reflecting on that, and then a piece to go to remember. And so all of that feedback was directly from the focus group members given to the consultant. Thank you.
So what I, what I think Jessica needs from us tonight is, and Mike actually talked about it, it's, 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 it's a tree, it has branches. But I think the fundamental question to move forward is, do we, do we want to go forward with a design competition? If we do want to do that, then we will also need to specify a location for that design competition. Because it was very clear from her investigation, to do all of the parameters, do all the specifications, that's gonna be very location dependent. So the first question is, do we want to have the design competition? Yes or no? And then, just to warn you, that if the answer is yes, then we will also have to, for her to move down that path, come up with a location. Don?
I think my, my, my view is gonna be, and this is not any offense to the idea at all, but to uncomplicate it to some degree, to just take the design competition off the table. There, there, we have location, and we have budget, and what it's, you know, design. We have a number of things already that we're gonna, I think, have to come to agreement on. And so my view would be to uncomplicate it by not doing the design. And if we need to get three more designs, or whatever, you know, whatever comes up, then let's focus on that, and let's focus on some of these other items. I think the budget one is interesting. We gave them a budget. We gave a budget, right? And you went out and got a design that would fit that budget, right? I mean, I guess we have to decide, is that the right budget, or do we need, you know, more twirly things out there? I mean, you know, there's...
So let me, let me help out. That's another branch on that same tree.
Right.
Because if we go do the design competition, then not only do we have to have the location discussion, but we have to have...
Have to know how much?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's why, I guess, because there are a number of things I think we're gonna have to come to agreement on, I would rather uncomplicate it and take the design piece out. That would be my, my view.
Jim?
How do we, how do we solicit designs without having a competition? Is that possible? We've already had two submitted.
I mean, you, if you're not happy with the designer, or you want to push him a little bit further, and, you know, perhaps get a, a different result, um, you know, maybe, because I, I think you and Brianna are feeling that's a little too large, and we need to maybe rein it in a little bit, and we can give them some new parameters. Because, you know, I like what I saw, but, you know, for me, I would just, I was, didn't want to limit things. But, you know, there is also a lot of logistics involved with the competition. And it's, there's, there's a, a lot of time that would be eaten up, um, with the staff. And also, you know, there is the, the money aspect. I, I mean, I would anticipate probably, like, 20 grand would be a reasonable price. But then you get, um, you have to get a, an architect that's gonna work with that designer to then do the actual construction documents, and, you know, that's gonna, you know, probably run into, you know, a hundred thousand dollars right there. That eats up a huge chunk of, um, you know, of funds that you might be using for this memorial. And I think we'd probably, we'd want to put it more into, um, you know, the actual, you know, marble and granite, and, and the actual substantive, um, things that you're gonna see.
Rather than just, you know, getting to that point.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, yeah. That's kind of where I'm at. I, I don't want to spend a whole bunch of money on the front end. I mean, we've already got two designs that sound like they're within the parameters of the focus group. And I like the focus group parameters. I like what they came up with. I think it's appropriate, it's solemn, you know, it, it seems like they did a really fine job. Um, but yeah, I'd, I'd rather put the money into the actual construction and materials than having a big whiz-bang design contest on the front end.
But I'm not offended by that. I just...
There you are. Well, I, I wanted to make sure there was an option, you know, if we could get designs otherwise.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We always need somebody.
What did the design cost so far?
So we have not spent all of the, um, what we've allocated to Olson Studio yet. Uh, we, they billed us at about 90%. So we're probably around 30, over 30,000 dollar mark, 35 to 38. We do have still some wiggle room remaining if we want to ask them to do additional design options. Or I can explore a whole new consultant.
Yeah, if we did a whole new consultant, are we talking about maybe somewhere similar? Because I mean, rather than having a competition, maybe, you know, have someone else come up with a, not showing them what we have, or have we come up with something else and see if the, if that sign is also something that, uh, that might be appropriate, and maybe fits within the budget, and at least have a second opinion.
An RFP.
Yeah.
So there is still a second design from this consultant that council has not seen. So that is an option, if you still want me to...
Well, but either way, that wasn't choo, that wasn't chosen by the focus group, right?
It was not. It was not disliked by the focus group. They just, the one you ended up seeing was the one that really struck them. Uh, but the, the other design also included all the same program elements that the focus group desired.
So to say some costs, rather than having a competition, maybe we had an alternative design from an alternative consultant.
So your suggestion that we go out and get a third design, and a third independent design?
Other than just doing, doing a competition.
Well, okay.
Suggestion. To see an alternative.
The only caveat I have is that you're telling us, you got to tell us what location.
Well, I think that, again, I think that should.
But for, for us to go out and bring somebody else on, I'm just talking about timing. If I follow your track as far as timing, we pick up the phone tomorrow, we call another architect and we say, here's the program, here's X amount of dollars we have, give us a design. Where?
So, yeah.
So I'm going to be back in the same situation.
Going back to that, if we reconvene, the focus group reconvene and they said, you know what, this is the location and that's it, then I just want to, again, it's because we have more than just one.
At, at the end of the day, even after you have this recommendations, it's like you have recommendations from Parks and Recreation and Planning and Zoning. At the end of the day, it's in your, in your purview to make that particular decision. So until y'all tell us where it's going to be, you're not going to guess.
And I would like to kind of voice it after our hearing from the reconvene with the focus group.
So we won't do, even if we, if y'all already tell us times up, we won't do anything from a third design standpoint until we hear the location.
Well, because I think that probably is important for location wise, right?
Absolutely is for the design.
Right.
Great. And just, I just want to mention, so we have the recommendation from the focus group, and then that also went to the Parks and Recreation Board. And they made their formal recommendations out of respect for the board. I would need to reconvene the focus group and the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Parks and Recreation Board would not be able to consider this again until August. So I just want, from a timeline perspective, I just wanted to lay out the, the milestones there.
But they don't meet in July.
Yeah, what?
They don't meet in Ju-.
They don't meet in July.
Do they have a special, any kind of special meeting?
Oh. You're not sitting next to me. You can't jab.
That's true.
Kevin?
Oh, thanks, man. So when the original presentation was presented in the work session, I was actually blown away by the original concept. It is way, like, I'm not saying this in a bad, but it was more grandiose than I was expecting, which I took it as a good thing. I, I love the respect and reverence that it gave to our service branches and the servicemen, women that are out there. I, I thought the location was appropriate. And, you know, Brianna's words really spoke to me when she talked about the history of, of the plaza and the building and how this was. But, you know, I do have to agree that plans definitely changed and it, it sidetracked, I think, that original vision of what this is. So to me, taking that plaza, and this is kind of my interpretation, but we, we've done things down there. We've had the, you know, the, the neighbors, helping neighbors program down there. We've had food truck festivals and stuff. But I, I feel this council has definitely pushed, you know, we've, we've dedicated ourselves to investing in Old Town and trying to have events down there. And I do feel like this is an underutilized, you know, area in our city. I love the fact that it brings purpose. It brings a area of reverence. I, I love the point about seating it near, near government even makes sense. I mean, it, it kind of goes hand in hand. I like the presentation as presented. I would be willing to move forward with that as it is. I definitely understand this council's appetite to maybe look at a different design. But to answer the, the question, I would be okay with not moving forward with a design competition, using the funds to actually, you know, go directly towards the construction of the project or a potential, you know, another professional design if this council does desire that. But just me personally, I think that what was presented was appropriate. I think it was respectful. And I think it brings dignity to our veterans and I, and, and the people that we've lost. So I, I really appreciate what was presented and I'd be willing to move forward with that.
Any other comments?
I wonder if it wouldn't prove us to all go out as a group with the focus group and the designers and just walk that space out there and get a feeling of scale. I think that you, you feel it's a little in the grandiose, large size, but I think you do as well, right? Like you said.
Well, I was saying, it was more grandiose than I was expecting. So I actually thought it was pretty good. But it was bigger than I thought it was.
We can feel the space out there and start to, to draw from that. Keep the people on board. I mean, we like what we saw. Maybe some tweaking and just modification will, will get us exactly what we're looking for out there in that space. And there's a lot of space to be used out there. And, you know, I was looking at the, the Google Maps view of it and the usual, useful space out there. And I think that we might be able to kind of land on something a little more tangible.
Brianna, did you have anything? I've got a question for Jessica. What's the opportunity to get the focus group together, like, rather relatively quickly?
I anticipate we could do that in June if we needed to. We just want to make sure that the, all the folks that want to attend can be there. I know June and July are both very difficult travel months. And so we want to get the majority of the group there. But I can do that as quick as I need to.
So I'm kind of by, so I usually don't, I try not to express my opinion. My, my first feeling was kind of like Don expressed. It was a much more grandiose plan than I was expecting, but I, I grew to appreciate it. And I actually like it. I like the plan as presented. But I'm okay asking the focus group to come together and if the council wants to, to participate and have the architect walk through the, the, the space to get a feel for it, I think that wouldn't be a bad idea. We don't normally get that involved in stuff like this, but this is, this is pretty personal. It's pretty serious. So I'd be, I'd be okay doing that.
I love putting eyeballs on things.
So you got, I mean, now, keep in mind, you know, we'd have to have a call meeting, wouldn't we? It'd be a posted meeting. Y'all would be receiving information. If you're not making any particular decision, it would. It'd be a posted. It'd be a posted meeting. So we can do that if that's, that would get the focus group together. We could literally have it, let's orchestrate it or ask the focus group to come back together per John's suggestion and then ask the architect to kind of walk everybody through it one last time so that we get a feel for what we're looking at. Is that, is that okay? So am I to interpret that we are not doing a design competition? I believe that is, I'm feeling that as a.
That's my bold.
I'm feeling that as a majority here. Okay. So we got that question answered tonight. As of right now, we're not having a design competition. We will convene the focus group and the council as soon as possible. And the focus group will, will discuss the location again. John, I, I understand your comment, but my, from what I've heard from members of the focus group, it was pretty, pretty way over not even a majority. It was like thirteen out of fourteen voted for the, for the plaza here. It was very, very strong in that area. And then the Parks Board agreed with them. So I, I think we're hearing, you know, we, we are hearing other comments, but I think it's not a majority comment. But we can hear that from the, the group themselves. Okay. You got enough from us?
I do. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mike. We're going to resume back down. Oh, Mindy was already getting ready to go.
I just turned on the.
But we're going to do the other one first. She didn't hear me. I have a presentation discussion of the Old Town Capel survey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as you all know, we did have the community, the Old Town Capel Town Home meeting on March 30th earlier this year. And so at that meeting, we did get input from the attendees. And we'll talk about those a little bit later. But after that meeting, I think the direction we received was to hold or to conduct a survey about Old Town so that we got more input from those that live in Old Town as well as the remainder of the community. So we hired On Point Insights, Ron Gailey with On Point did our citizen satisfaction survey. So we did hire him to do, to conduct the Old Town surveys. Well, we had a, a large response to that survey. And so Ron is joining us tonight to present those survey results to us. I'll turn it over to Ron.
Can you everyone? Are you able to hear me?
We've got you. You're, you're loud and clear.
Okay. Hey, can I share my screen, please?
Share.
Yes.
Go ahead.
It says that it's been disabled. Okay. Okay, now sharing. Can you see now the survey?
We got you.
Perfect. So look, hey, I look forward to sharing with you the results of the survey. The survey was conducted from, I have the dates here, from May 10th to May 29th. So we just barely got out of the field. Yesterday was the last survey that we accepted. We got 1,972 responses. So we got quite a few responses. And the survey had a number of purposes, which I'll, I'll go through it in kind of in order. I won't read everything here. Well, maybe I will. But anyway, we want to understand if people visited Old Town, why or why not? So we'll look at that. We'll look at how they feel about Old Town today and what they think the future could be, which is a very interesting thing to look at. They're in juxtaposition of their views today and the views of the future. And then where they think maybe some investments in Old Town might be appropriate. We look at community events. We look at their concerns or fears. And we look at the kinds of activities that they was supporting more. And so that's, overall, that's the, that's the objective. Now, let me show you a couple of things here. First of all, on the left, we have where do you live in Capel? So we have people from seven major areas, but also Area 3, of course, where Old Town is. And that's where we got the majority of our response, our participants is from Area 3. And then on the right-hand side, if they were in Area 3, we asked that they lived in the, the close proximity to Old Town, or if they were in Area 2, which is also in Old Town boundaries, or if they were beyond that. And down at the very bottom here, you can see that we got like 1,972 responses. So that's clear. And 102 of them were in Area 1, so right around here. And 77 of them, seven of them were in Area 2. Now, let me just mention that some, there are two people from the same household could be responding. Actually, I even allowed three, but I checked those. And I even, if, if, if there were more than three in an area, I checked them very closely to make sure that they were unique. And I found one where it appears that the same person took it three, you know, three times. And that one was removed. So in general, it looks like very clean, that we got no duplication in the same household that wasn't, you know, people giving different responses and thinking for themselves. Any thoughts before I move on and give you the results?
But just remember that we really can't see the numbers, so you're going to have to help us with that.
Oh, the numbers are down at the bottom. You can't see these numbers here?
They're pretty small.
Oh, okay. I'll, I'll articulate them. Demographics. We had a very good mix of male and female, although more females responded than males. This was true in the last study I did for you, where we had more females than males. Sixty, forty is fairly typical. And we were a little bit above that on this particular study. Although we did have a good mix of age groups, younger people, thirty to thirty-nine. So we had about 20% who were under thirty-nine, thirty-nine or under. And we had a mix of forty, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-nine, and sixty, sixty-nine, and seventy. So good mix by age group. More of them who took the survey had children than no children, 59% to 41%. Most were married, 87%, although we did have some singles who took it as well. We got pretty good representation of age or race ethnicity, although a little bit under what we would be ideal having for Asians. That is about half of what the Asian population is. And that was the same kind of, that's the same problem we had with the last, last study, although this one we got a little bit more, a teeny bit more. And most were homeowners. We did get a good mix of people who've been in the city for not very long duration, one to four years is 40%, five to nine is 19%, although the majority had been in the city for twenty years or more. And so, yeah, very good there. Now, the first question we asked them in the survey was, how frequently do you visit restaurants, stores, businesses, or attend events in Old Town Capel? So that's the question down at the bottom here. And, and as you probably assume, those in Area 1 visit it most, although some of them do not go and visit Old Town Capel to visit the restaurants or stores or businesses very often. So some are monthly, some are quarterly here. And as you get further away from Area 1 and Area 2, you get even fewer who come, although about 24% of all, all the other areas of Capel said they want to pay the year weekly. So there is some visiting that's going on there that's healthy and it increases as you're, you know, of course, closer to Capel. Why do you not visit? If they, if they didn't go at least weekly, so if they were monthly or quarterly, no, if they were quarterly or less, quarterly or less, we asked. So why don't you go more often? And they said, well, there's not really much there. This is a summary of their comments here. And the other one was, they lack the quality of restaurants that I'd like to see. Although there are people who say, I only use the farmer's market. So not a great deal of activity there that brings up holes in it. And that was kind of the problem. They wish there was more there. As we look at parking, was brought up by some. We do have comments about why they didn't visit. And if you'd like, you can look at that later on. But we can say, I would like to look at the people who'd comment on lack of restaurants. And it's very easy. And when we look at them, when there were more restaurants, Dopeys, Quince's, Twisted Root, I visited more frequently. This is a 50 to 59-year-old female, five to nine years in the city and lives somewhere else other than nearby Capel. If I do pick only, if I use the filters and only pick those in Area 1 or 2, some of them just say not enough restaurants and bars, and they live right there. Or no good restaurants or shopping and this 70-year-old female lives there. And these all happen to be females, but they're just, they would eat more restaurants. I'm going to go to the next question. This is a very interesting question. The question is, is when you think of Old Town today, what word or words come to mind? And people would choose the three that came to mind. And the farmer's market and great potential. And the art center came up routinely. 65% mentioned the farmer's market. And 41% mentioned it's got great potential. But on the right-hand side is the next question, which is, if you think about Old Town the way you would like it to be, what three words come to mind? And so that's shown here. And the numbers are quite strong. Great food is the thing as they would like it. They would love to be the great food there. Even lots to do. A gathering place, a vibrant place, nightlife. These things come as what they wish it were as opposed to what it is. And I'll pause right here and see if you have any questions.
It's great data. Go ahead, Ron.
Okay. The other thing I want to show you on this page is, well, what about the people who are really close in Area 1 or 2? What do they wish it was? And so I'm turning on that filter and it just shows up. And they're even more likely to want great food and have lots to do and community events, and even enjoy the vibrant or nightlife, hope that they would have that. So I just thought that was really interesting. They are slightly... They are slightly different, but maybe even more so about some of the things that others outside of Capel are asking for. As a matter of fact, I took this question on the right, as you would like it to be, and I did slice it by area. And instead of showing all of them, I'm just showing the top ten responses. But as you can see, on the left is Area One, really close. Area Two, a little bit further out, but part of Old Town. And then the rest. And that's sorted in order by all other Capels, so that's the order that things are in. And as you can see, there's not too much difference. A very little bit of difference between Areas One, Two, and the other areas. Uh, as a matter of fact, even Area One wishes it was a little bit more vibrant. Uh, and they're right around here. Although a little less likely to say nightlife, which is understandable because of the set, the potential of noise. We'll look into that a little bit more. And they're very likely to won't like the community events being there. So I just thought that was really interesting, that although there are minor differences among those in various areas, it's not like Area One and Area Two are drastically different from the rest of Capel in what they would like it to become in the future. I then asked them, what investments? Okay, go ahead.
Good. Oh, I'm sorry. John?
Uh, as far as like great food and lots to do, does it even break down further as to what they're talking about?
Um, we do explore that somewhat. Great food, no. So regarding great food, they just wish there were a variety of more restaurants there. We looked at the comments, and they don't specify which. Although I will say that some asked for an ice cream store, you know, something that was funner to go to afterward. But in general, they just asked for places to mingle, places to hang out, things to enjoy. But normally, that was after an event that took place, or even as a go, a place to go and mingle in general. But it did seem to be more hanging out more as the idea, or a great place to be. Uh, as a matter of fact, the next question was, in order to further activate Old Town Capel, the city may need to invest additional resources. Which of the following should be considered as further investments? Now, we phrased this the way we did on purpose, and that is, they know that if there's money required, should they do it? And some people did say none of these. In other words, don't spend any more money in Capel. And that's two percent. And so you do have some, a two percent of the one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two, who say don't spend any more. But a lot of them do say because there was more restaurants, eating establishments, and fine dining. And a lot also indicated more nightlife activities such as bars, fine bars, microbreweries, live music, cinemas. So those came out pretty high. And, uh, as did just plays, concerts, fairs, weekend markets, just anything you can do to make it funner. And even a little bit, quite a bit less so, would, would be the shopping. And, and, and so I found that to be interesting, that maybe, um, you know, clothing stores, home goods, luxury goods, crafts, et cetera, those types of stores are desired by twenty percent for sure, but not as high. And also, if I do this by Area One and Area Two to find out if it's way different, do we get a lot of none of these in Area One and Two? Sorry, it's a little bit slow because of the internet connection here. Um, but no difference, so here it is, right? And they want even more restaurants and eating establishments, so the order didn't change at all. And, um, and there's even a little bit more desire in Area One and Area Two for some of the things that were mentioned. Now, we did mention events, community events, like plays and concerts, fairs and weekend markets. And so we followed that up with another questioning, a question, which is, what types of community events would you support in Old Town? And so this gave us a lot of things that were potential and things you might think about. Um, and they liked the idea of festivals and food trucks. They even liked the idea of bands and vendor markets that you have there. So the farmer's market is nice, but maybe even expand that into more. Um, acoustic musicians or cultural events or movie nights were also relatively, uh, desired. Kids-friendly activities, I was surprised. We had a lot of kid, parents with kids in here, and that didn't come out so high. And even if, I, I, I checked at this, even if you take those with children in the household and remove those who don't have children, the, the kid-friendly activities does jump. But it by no means becomes the number one, two, or three. Uh, so it's down at number five. So I think some kid-friendly activities is of course important and might be useful. But, but it's by no means, um, uh, you know, there are other things that seem to come in. And so I think you have a mix of those, but you have a lot of other things that you might want to do to make it, to make it work. At this point, I just asked them a question. If you have other thoughts?
Ron, Ron, hold on just a second.
I'll go back.
Yeah, yeah. What does that look like for Zone One and Two? Just the people who actually live down there? Do that, do they want festivals and bands and?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, they did. Um, so I'm doing Area One here. So festivals and bands is, the order is, uh, festivals, actually, food trucks came up in importance for them. So, and festivals kind of drop a teeny bit, bands about the same, yeah.
They seem to want that also down there.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Yeah. I was surprised as well, you know, to see that. But, uh, it, they, they were, they were relatively accepting as a group, you know, as a whole. I realize there are some who are not, and we'll show you a little bit more on that. Um, other thoughts about Old Town? So this is just a comment. After we had gone through all those questions, I said, you know, do you have any other thoughts about it? Please share. And here's where I thought we would get a lot of, quit wasting your time, stop doing this, you know, uh, or, or, you know, shut down the music, or watch out for the parking, you know? And we did get a little bit of that. Cause we got like, I'm, I don't know if you can see it, but three percent, oh, I clicked in the wrong place. Oh, man, what did I click on? Oh, I'll just click that. We do. Okay. So three percent of the people did say, it's too late, don't do anything more, right? But that's by far, I mean, it's a small number. And, uh, as many people said, hey, why don't you advertise more? Let, let us know what's going on. So there were some, but most people were actually more quality restaurants, more places to hang out and mingle, more adult activities, alcohol drinks and so forth, and then more kid-friendly options. So, you know, this is just off the top of their head, things that they thought that we should do, comments. And I have all of the comments here. And, and if you want, if you want to deep dive into any of the topics, we can click on the theme up here and say, what do people have to say about live music, right? And so we can look at live, uh, music. As a matter of fact, you can even look at live music in Area One and Area Two. And frankly, there's not a lot there that talks about live music. We only have the three. And some persons, this person said they didn't like it. But, um, but others were, were, um, it'd be lovely to have a bar and some music player late, later in the evening, at least until midnight. This is a sixty, sixty-nine-year-old female, lives in Area Two. This person didn't think it was a grand idea. This next one did. Uh, it would be great to have something and, um, you know, that runs later and that's around. But you can look at those kinds of things in more detail for any of the questions. And again, you can look at the Area One and Two. Were you going to find some opposed, but many more for some of these things? The next question we asked was about concerns. We wanted to find out, how concerned are they with parking, with trash, with maintenance, with noise, with visitors? And the thing I found was interesting was that they are least concerned with the visitors. So getting, you know, we don't want people around here. There are ten percent who are concerned with the visitors. So you, you know, you'll hear some of that. And, and that'll be, in this case, about ten to twelve people, right? So there are people who are concerned with the visitors and with the noise. But the greatest concern was the parking. Now, I do want to look at Area One and Two again for this one, because that's important. And Area One and Two is not very concerned with visitors. And, uh, the thing they've become more concerned with is trash, because they don't worry about parking. Uh, but they are a little bit concerned about parking, so that's very true. About twenty percent bring that up as an issue. So parking is a challenge. It'll remain a challenge. Uh, there are more people for, you know, that are not concerned about these things, but there's definitely concern. And then the next one was, how often should we have activities in, uh, Old Town Capel? So the question was, for events from April to October, how supportive would you be of event frequencies below? And the event frequencies were every weekend, two weekends per month, one weekend per month, less often than a weekend per month, so maybe quarterly or something, and then no events at all. And clearly, the loser here, where people were unsupported, was no events at all. So people didn't want that. And what people did want in general were at least one weekend per month, or maybe two. And there's actually not very much concern with every weekend, a little bit more, thought that maybe we don't need to have it every weekend. But you have a very good support. Now, this is of course from April to October. But it does look to me like you could even have events November, December, January, February, March, right? If you wish, because there seems to be relatively good support for these things. And if I go to Area One and Area Two and look at them, it doesn't change too much. They definitely don't want no events. Like, that seems like out of character, and there's not much support with that. There's a hundred and seventy-nine people here that was, are responding. So no events is not thing, not much of a thing. And they're fairly much against less often than one weekend per month. Like, that's not too, you know, so they're about the same as the rest. And they're relatively supportive, about the same as everyone else for every weekend. So I found that to be positive. Now, the real question is, is how late? How supportive would you be of events extending beyond nine P M? In this case, I put all of the areas here, One, Two, Three, and then all other Capel. One, Two, Three, all other Capel. And what we find here is that there's not a great deal of difference between them, a little bit. And surely, events extending beyond, beyond nine P M is a little bit of an event issue, and it does become an issue for those in Area One. And they are bringing it up, so this is twenty-four percent. And so twenty-four percent say they're either unsupported or strongly unsupported. Um, Area Two doesn't have that problem. They're, they're not, you know, they're not like everybody else. But Area One, maybe to go, uh, beyond nine P M is a little bit of an issue for some of them. But a lot of them, a lot of them are very supportive. So this is sixty, you know, sixty-plus percent are very supportive. And so it goes fairly well. I, I just think you just have to be thoughtful about the way it's done. And of course, some people will not like that, and I understand that totally. Any thoughts about this?
Is there any insight why people that live well away from the area even have an opinion on that?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, you know, I did, when I was reading their comments, there were a fair number who just had empathy toward people who lived there. So there was an understanding that there's housing right there, that people live right there, and people understood that as a cha, a potential challenge.
Uh, Jim? Hang on, hang on a minute. Go ahead.
Oh, okay, thanks. Uh, yeah, Ron, did you get any insight into when everyone turned into a pumpkin? What was the latest that people wanted to see activity going on out there?
You know, I think I'm gonna have to read that more carefully. I did see, we read one that said, it'd be great to have a sale until midnight or whatever. But I, I, we didn't ask that question anywhere, so it'd just be a voluntary thing. And I think if I look at the comments, I might be able to tease out some thoughts.
Okay. No, that's fine. I, I was just curious.
John?
That's the same thing I was gonna ask. Beyond nine, is that ten, eleven, twelve? That's what I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Yeah, and really, I don't have, I don't have a solid answer. I mean, I, you know, in truth, I thought there would be much more resistance, right? When we wrote this. And, and I should have been more thoughtful about how late is reasonable. But I didn't ask that, and it's a, it's a bit of a gap, and it's too bad I didn't.
Okay. Thank you.
The next question is more interesting. And that, this is support for events, so these are like the family events and so forth like that, right? And, and support for wineries, breweries after nine P M was quite strong. And here, uh, here we have seventy-five percent on average being very supportive or somewhat supportive across all of them. And even Area One and Area Two. So, like, they don't seem to be any different here. And I think as long as it's done thoughtfully, you would do fine. You know, I think there is, of course, a little concern that it's done in an intelligent way, a way that's keeping with, uh, Capel and Old Town Capel, that there's good support for this. And, um... Yeah, I, I have nothing more to say other than look at that. And, um, and so I, I felt pretty positive about that. I think there's some people who are against alcohol in general, and so you get some unsupported people. But it doesn't seem to be an issue that is, is strongly, they're negative about. Okay. So here is another question. So the final question, we, what we did in this case is we wanted them to pick. We said, here are three different ideas for the future of Old Town. Which do you think would be best? And then we had community gathering. And we said, encourage more city events, fairs, concerts, plays, kid-friendly events, and so forth, that people come to enjoy, periodic nightlife that ends at nine P M. So that's the way we described it. And then we had nightlife that vibrancy. Encourage a vibrant nightlife atmosphere. Um, includes later hours, more bars, live music, wine bars, et cetera. And then business first. We said, incentivize old town business development, more shopping, more places to eat, more service providers. Now, I do want to point out something, and that is that we saw that people wanted more restaurants, a lot more restaurants. And here, the business first, it, that didn't seem to capture them, and we probably should have broken up businesses separate from restaurants. And we may have gotten a different result. But here, what I am telling you is that people love gathering, and they want anything that encourages, encourages the gathering. I believe restaurants are one of those things that really encourages gathering, and it's a really positive thing. But they're also quite supportive of nightlife vibrancy. And I, in my view, they had a hard time choosing between the two, because we only allowed them to pick one, right? And so I think that was one where it was difficult for them, because they had to choose. And we already saw that nightlife vibrancy was very positive for people. But when it comes right down to it, the community gathering won out by a small amount. And then I had one final question, which is, any final thoughts about Old Town? Um, they didn't have to answer this question, they could. And here's where we got a little bit of balance on what they wanted at the end. More quality restaurants, more community gathering events and activities, and then more nightlife options. And then even open bars, wineries, breweries, if they mentioned that specifically. So it, like, I, 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 I don't know what you were expecting. This is a little different than I expected. I was a little more afraid for some of the things. But I saw a lot of support for Old Town in general, and for, and, and, and a lot of support for a variety of potential visions, particularly if it includes restaurants and, and gatherings. And I think I'll stop there. That's, um, and if you'd like me to go back to any section, or if you'd like to ask any questions, I'll do what I can to help.
Counsel, any questions? John?
Was there a question or something similar to asking them why they actually moved to Old Town in the first place? Would you then?
So why don't they go to Old Town?
Right.
Yeah, that was actually, we showed that very early on. Why don't you visit Old Town?
No, 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 why, why, why they moved to Old Town, why did decide?
Oh, why they moved, no, we didn't ask that. That's a really good question. Um, we didn't ask that question.
Look, I asked that because when we had the event, I asked some of the residents there, and they said, "This is the reason why, so the event."
Yeah. Well, seeing all the support for the Old Town, that the Old Town people have for making it stronger, uh, you know, improving, making it a vibrant place to live, um, I think that's what they want, right? A very vibrant, interesting, uh, uh, place to live. I think you'll find some who, if, if it gets too noisy and too crazy, and I don't wanna move. And I, I believe that might be true. But, um, most wouldn't, you know, and I, I realize that that's a challenge. What do you do with a few? And, and there will be some who are against this.
Kevin?
Uh, hey, Ron, I just wanna say thank you so much for, I, I think the questions that you asked were very insightful, and to be very honest, uh, you know, I think overall, we hear a lot of just anecdotes about, you know, individuals, how, you know, what they wanna hear. To me, this really puts a focus on what I've heard, you know, just from people. So actually having data to back that up, and having the mix of people who live in Old Town and don't live in Old Town, you know, kind of being on similar paths for that, that vision of what that area looks like, uh, gives me a lot of, uh, hope that we can, you know, maybe inject that vibrancy and that life into that area that people are looking for. So, uh, to me, all this just, it just gets me excited about the future. So, Ron, thank you so much for, um, gathering this data for us. We really appreciate it. And I think it definitely gives us a lot to think about, but also kind of confirms a lot of things as well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's clear, the people in Area 1 and 2 don't say, "No change, leave it the way it is." Like, that doesn't happen. And they couldn't.
Anybody have any other questions? Uh, where is this available? Is it on our...
It's not on the website yet. Um, the memo that you all received, there's a link to it, so you can access it through that link.
Okay.
But we can get it on the Old Town community page. We have a whole page dedicated to the community conversation and all the other information, so we can put this on there.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
That's something that we can send out in like, uh, the newsletter or something. I would love for more citizens to be able to see. Are we good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, excellent.
John? So I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up what Kevin said, which is, when we had the events, you know, I asked, and they said, the HOA member, they were like, "No, this is precisely why we moved here." And I, and I talked about, well, I was kind of afraid that if we go beyond kind of hours, people will complain. He said, "No, we actually want more stuff here, events here, but even longer hours," because he said, "Oh, that's the reason, exactly the reason why we moved here." So I, I was, that was just kind of a surprise comment, but then the data kind of shows that that's exactly what they want.
If I could piggyback on that, what I heard as well was, there was, you know, like, there was promises, I think, made that like, it would be a little bit bigger and stuff, and that was a big driver for people moving there. So I, you know, it's, they built the homes and moved in. Now, I feel like we need to almost do our part to see what we can do to, to enable more business and more vibrancy down there.
They talked about consistently having, and they want, they, they don't mind drawing people down there. That's what, the people that I talked with, and that's what they said.
You know, it also makes me think that when we were talking, oh, no, when y'all were talking, uh, about, you know, how some of the restaurant chains, that sort of thing, look at traffic counts, and, and some of the data are the metrics that they consider, uh, would mean they would never put a restaurant here. But then you look at what people in the community are saying that they want. You know, maybe that data would be something we could use, it would be compelling for, if not chains, at least independent restaurateurs, just to show them that there's really a, an interest here, you know, in our community to support such an establishment.
One of the things that will probably come into that discussion is what concessions are we as a council willing to make to do that, too? So that's the other side of the equation.
I'll tip every time I get a drink.
That's the next presentation.
You can tip $1 million.
All right, thank you very much, Ron. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you guys for being the host of Count for Smart Cities Using Research. Like, you guys are the best.
Hey, I think we need to, I think we need to quote him on that. Thank you, Ron.
Uh-huh, bye-bye.
All right, um, anybody have any other comments on that? That's, I, you know, I find it interesting, he should have done it while he was on the... Whenever I go down there for a concert, boy, at nine o'clock, people, people just scatter. So it's kind of, I guess maybe that's because there's nothing to keep them down there. So anyway. Okay, uh, Item B, discussion regarding the local option election.
Thank you, Mayor. If you all wouldn't mind just discussing one of the issues, please.
Oh, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Mayor. As you said, this item is to provide you all information regarding options for a local option election. This handout that I'm sharing with you is just informational. Um, these are to give you kind of practical examples of what the different type of local option elections you, we all could have. So first, let me say that this local option election, they are citizen-driven, they are citizen-led. There is nothing that city council can do to call the election. Yes, sir.
And let's preface this by, this was due to the community feedback that we got, that these questions were coming up?
Just as Ron highlighted, um, there was a lot of conversation around alcohol, uh, wineries, breweries, um, within the community conversation. And so this is to give you all the information that you would need in order to understand local option election laws.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome, sir. Thank you. Um, so if I could highlight, um, the handout that I gave you. Um, today, what Capel has, and this is important to understand what we have now versus what we could have in the future. So today, currently, we have the allowance of beer and wine off-premise consumption. So that means that you could go to your local 7-Eleven, you could go to Sprouts, and you could purchase beer or wine to take home with you and consume it there, or consume somewhere else. Off-premise consumption. So, uh, then, we have the mixed beverage restaurant permit. So that means that the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption authorized, but only in restaurants which hold a food and beverage certificate. So I do wanna say that a food and beverage certificate is, um, that authorization is given by TABC, the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission. Uh, so that is not something that the City of Capel issues, um, nor do we audit the sale of food and beverages for restaurants. That does not come through our offices at all. That is completely regulated by the state. Um, so what that means in a practical example is, if you wanted to go to Anna Mia's and you wanna have a margarita with tequila in it, you can. But it's based on what the voters authorized. Um, and, and that election was held in 2006. So, um, for that, like I said, the election was held in 2006, and it was about a 70%, 30% in favor of the election. Um, and that was driven by a political action committee, which is better known as a PAC. Um, so now, if I can give you examples of the surrounding cities and what they have within their allowance, um, and I wanna say that these businesses that we've highlighted within the examples, those do not have food and beverage certificates. So that's an important thing to remember when we talk about what is allowed. Um, so for instance, in the City of Carrollton, uh, Three Nations Brewing, uh, is in Carrollton, and they have a wine and malt beverage retailer's permit with a brew prep permit. So that means that they can distill their own malt beverages and sell them as well as you can consume them on-site without having a food and beverage certificate. So then, we look at Landen Winery within the City of Dallas. That means that you can go and have a glass of wine at Landen's and not have to purchase food with it. Nor does the retailer have to have a certain percentage of food sales. So then, within the City of Louisville, distilled spirits on and off-premise. That means that they can distill their own spirits on-site. You can consume the spirits on-site, and you can also take the spirits off-site for consumption at a later time. Um, I do wanna mention that this allowance opens the door for liquor stores. So that's an important thing to also remember. Town of Addison, they also have liquor stores. And that is, uh, distilled spirits off-premise. So that means that they can hold packages of that liquor and sell it to you for off-premise consumption. Now, an important part of what Addison also has is the nightlife feature. They have a late ordinance, uh, certificate that is held with TABC that allows them to stay open till 2:00 AM. Um, and also, you can go to a bar in Addison. You can have a mixed beverage in Addison without having to purchase food. So, all that to say is, these are the, there's, if, this all comes out of the election code about what we can and cannot do, or how the petition must be written. Um, it's, I will tell you, it's not easy to understand. Um, it's very complicated, as Mr. Hager can attest to as well. Um, but these are just some generalized options to kind of get you thinking about what would need to happen if a PAC or a citizen were to lead this venture.
So Brianna was asking me, and I'll ask you, the first two, the beer on and wine on, do those allow you to buy the product and take it home?
Yes.
Okay, so...
So why doesn't it say on slash off?
Yeah.
So, the, that's a very good question. The way that we, the way that we view the TABC laws is basically, once you get that, that upper tier of being able to consume it on-premise, you also get the off-premise consumption as well. So it's almost like you, you attain levels and you get everything below that level.
Gotcha.
Thank you. You're welcome.
So would there be any way to do the distilled spirits on without allowing packaged liquor sales?
So the way that we understand it today, uh, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so just to get through the handout, on the backside is a timeline that I've referenced for you all. Um, and this is just, again, there's a lot of things that happen during this process that are not, that are not listed here. So, um, first, uh, an application for a petition must come through the city secretary's office. And that is just a requirement of 10 signatures of registered voters in the City of Capel. So they produce, um, the application along with a publication notice to the office, and we verify that. Once that is verified, the petition documents are actually issued by the city secretary's office. So that means that you would have enough pages to where you would attain your signatures of registered voters. Depending on the petition language, um, right now, we're estimating that we would need 5,757 signatures of registered voters in the City of Capel. Um, after, so the petitioner is given 60 days to attain those signatures, and then we, our office is given 30 days to verify those signatures. And then, once the proper amount of signatures are verified, then I would take it to city council, and you all would order the election, just like you all do now. Um, and then the election schedule would follow, just as we do a general election, a special election. Um, it would just need to be called the 78th day before the next uniform election date. So you're thinking either May or November, to that kind of timeline. Um, again, like I said, this timeline is very general. Um, but, um, if you wanted to talk to me more in depth about it, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to answer questions as well.
I think I have a question for Bob.
Okay.
Would we be able to pass an ordinance that would allow distilled spirits on-premise without a package sale going on?
No.
No.
We, we cannot control the sale of alcoholic beverages. You just hold the election and TABC decides, depending on what license and what proposition you pass.
Okay, thank you.
Once you pass proposition, and we're at the mercy of TABC to regulate licenses that are appropriate for what we've helped launch.
Oh, Kevin?
All right, so, I, I just wanna make sure I understand this. So, Capel today, you can get a mixed beverage because of the restaurant permit, right? You have the mixed beverage restaurant permit. So, but this down here, um, would be mixed beverage on-premise, but that would not open the door for liquor stores?
Right. Mixed beverage on-premise just allows the sale of mixed beverages. So think in your mind, bars. So that would be a bar-type situation, because you would not be required to also serve food.
Got it. So basically, we have, if, I'm looking at this, so the first one, obviously, that's your, that's your brewery, then your winery that we saw there. But then, uh, then the other two would allow for liquor stores. And then the last one would be for mixed beverage, like the bar seat.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Jim?
So on the, you've got down here the 5,757 signatures to be required for the petition to succeed, to be submitted to the electorate, right? Is that a certain percentage of the overall registered voters?
That is a 35% of the registered voters who voted in the last governor's election.
And would it be on the same ballot on the next gubernatorial election?
It would be on the, so let's just say, for instance, I had a petition right now that had the required signatures. Technically, you all would need to call the election for November, because that is the next uniform election date.
So the timing of it would largely determine the success, right? I mean, if you could get 35% of the registered voters, if you had it in a municipal election, we wouldn't likely have anything close to that kind of turnout in the actual vote.
Um, well, no, technically. But the, what, what has to happen prior to that is just for you to get that number of signatures. You don't have to have that type of turnout for that, if I understand your question correctly.
It's only a majority.
Right, right, right. No, 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 I, I, I understand that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Ashley.
Kevin?
Bob, would you, could you clarify a little? Because, um, I, you know, I heard the language earlier about this has to be, um, you know, citizen-driven. This, the only thing the council does on this is we, you know, verify, you know, the city secretary brings it to us, we vote to put it on the election. Um, what does that mean, like, so hypothetically, like, let's just take us seven, or us eight around the table. Are we allowed to sign the position, petition or anything like that?
As a citizen, you can sign.
Kind of similar to like our endorsement rules and stuff, as long as Kevin Neville's place four is, is not saying it, Kevin Neville's private citizen is saying the same.
Right. We can't use city funds to support or defeat a proposition.
Got it.
But you can participate, I mean, you can be an advocate. You know, Mr. Walker asked a question about when you call the election. You know, the strategy is, do you wanna be the one to run for office when liquor's on the ballot? It used to be back in old days, when I first threatened Brexit law. They, no one wanted to call that election for May, because the Baptists would come out and defeat you. If you were pro-winner, so, and, and the attitude about that's probably changed a lot. And so, uh, also to Mr. Walker's point, November elections, county and state elections are being held, more people vote. And all that plays into the strategy for calling the election.
Martin? And can an organization like the Chamber do it if it's, receives funds from the city?
He needs our funds to do it.
You got the wrong place?
I don't know how the Chamber would feel about doing that.
I'm just asking.
It's usually people that are associated with it. That, it's usually merchant-driven.
Yeah.
Who did the petition last time there was money from, um, the grocers? They were interested in having beer and wine. So, and the restaurants were interested in having alcohol to get that white, you know, dinner, table of restaurants, they had to serve alcohol. Brianna?
So, just for clarification, like, if we decide we wanna move forward with a petition, then we would outline, for example, depending on what we collectively decide?
We- we would not do that.
We cannot.
The citizens could.
So we would put all- these were all the options?
No. It would have to be whatever your citizen group decided to pursue.
Oh, okay. So it could be any of- any or all?
Any- any or all of those would be possible.
So the- so the election code lays out exactly what the proposition language must be. You can have multiple measures, um, on the proposition, but the election code specifically lays out exactly what your petition should read. So, there's that option.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand, like, if we were- I was only in favor of two of these, that doesn't matter. It's about whatever the citizens decide, they could actually open up Pandora's box.
City council member Brianna Hinata Smith, yes, she can have her own personal views, but yes.
Okay, gotcha.
You don't have a whole lot to say about it.
No. Okay.
So, Jim?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I was going to use it as an example, you better go first.
Okay, well, I just wanted to follow up on something that Brianna said. So, it would be my understanding that the way this works is, it's citizen or merchant-driven. They form a separate PAC. They alone are responsible for- for funding, the petition drive, the marketing of the- of the effort, the whole deal.
Yes, sir.
And then, they come to us at some point to verify their petitions. And then, at that point, we're obligated to call the election.
And pay for the election as well.
Pay for it.
And- and pay for the election at the next scheduled election, whatever that might be.
Yes.
And there's no time limit? Or is there a time limit?
There's-
On how long they have to collect?
Sixty days.
So that's a sixty-day time limit?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that- this is a completely independent?
Yes.
Thing, until they get it done, and then it's up to us to run the election, that's all we're doing. We can't dictate what's on the ballot.
That is correct.
That's dictated by what their petitions have dictated they want.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, what do you want to allow in town and what you don't want to allow in town? That's kind of a policy issue, too. Do you want bars? Do you want liquor stores? Because we need to know what proposition that we're going to see to accomplish. What you just saw, what Mike was talking about earlier. If you want a vibrant nightlife, what do you envision that to be? Then that may dictate what you're willing to support or what you're looking for.
So speaking of the vibrant nightlife, who sets the extended hours?
That is a permit that is given by TABC. That- that is also an election.
So what is the standard hours that they?
Midnight.
Okay, midnight is standard, and then extended would be to two or four, six, or whatever.
If you- if you lived in the area a while and been to Dallas, you know it's-
I'm very sequestered.
Stay out two o'clock in the morning.
Nothing good happens after midnight.
So, question, if- if, you know, if the beer, wine, and mixed beverage got approved, would Jim be able to go in and have his Scotch neat at the- under a mixed beverage permit?
Um, yes. Yes, a mixed beverage permit?
Yes.
Mixed beverage on, the last one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that would be in a bar. So, again, for context, that's all I'm giving you.
Okay, thank you. John?
If you wanted to go at two o'clock in the morning, we'd have to have another election for extended.
I'm in my DJ's law.
He needs to be in bed by then.
Bob, um, once this actually is approved, and what is the process if it turns out that this wasn't such a good idea after all?
You have to have another election.
Is that also called by?
Then, yes.
Same process, the same process.
That would be a- an election to prohibit, rather than legalize.
Brianna? I thought you were- I thought you were-
I know, sorry, I was looking at Bob. We can't limit the location, can we? Like, only certain areas of town can have? Like, if all of this were to pass, could we restrict?
There is some provisions about allowing certain things in certain parts of town.
Okay.
Very complicated.
Right, where it's like, you know, not near schools, not near, yeah.
No, it's not that, it's like downtown. You can have a downtown drinking area.
Okay.
I don't know that we've got anywhere that would fit that.
I was just thinking back to when beer and wine sales were passed. Like, I remember that, and-
Well, what we did, and unabashedly, we made, uh, SUPs for restaurants and convenience stores, so we got- they're the underlying use. So, we never regulated alcohol, which we could not do. We regulated the underlying use for people that would get the license.
Right.
It's- and we finally matured above that, and they are where they are, and we're happy with that, so that we repealed those provisions, the SUP provisions.
Jim?
Could we do some type of zoning overlay, like a entertainment district that would include Old Town? To limit the locations?
Could do, but you couldn't do it to serve and not serve alcohol, because the field's preempted.
Right. But in terms of controlling if this was to- something like this passed and, you know, uh, liquor sales by the-
Yeah, you- we could- you would under- you could regulate the underlying entertainment areas. Say you could have live music, need a special use permit, or it's only limited to Old Town or somewhere else along, say, Dent Tech.
And what prompted this was the preceding discussion about vibrancy in Old Town? And are we going to allow, for example, a pub that doesn't serve more than fifty-one percent food? Or doesn't derive revenues from more than fifty-one percent food, but it- they serve drinks until midnight?
Or the breweries and the wineries, there's restrictions about how much they can sell.
Right.
So then they have to move to another license. That's why you go to, instead of just to allow a brew pub or a winery bar, you go to on- and off-premise beer and wine, malt beverage and wine, to achieve it to you. So that you can have, so that they can, in words, I think, was it thirty gallons or something crazy like that? Is all they can sell on-premise with a brew pub. Say that right. So, we've had one economic development client come to us and say, "Well, could I bring the liquor in?" No, you need food and beverage permit holder to transport the alcohol to the place of business. It's- that's why people don't like to have the, uh, club licenses anymore, because they cannot get a delivery of alcohol. They have to actually go out and get it and bring it themselves. As crazy as we are.
So, is there a sequencing here where we would have to decide first what we- how we define greater nightlife and vibrancy in Old Town? And if that's defined by having a couple of bars or pubs, then we would look at to what extent this would be required?
Political action group would then want to look at what licenses you would be willing to support as a community to get the petition signed. Yes. That- I think these things kind of dovetail together. You're going to have to decide what we're going to- what would that look like if it were vibrant? And how do we control that, you know, to your point, call it entertainment district.
I'll keep my promise.
Thank you. You didn't hear my last comment?
No.
Okay, nevermind. I didn't say it then. All right, anybody have anything else for Bob or Ashley? That's a lot to chew on. Thank you very much. All right, item C, discussion related to Old Town Capel opportunities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, just real quick, I wanted to show you, we're going to talk a little bit about the Old Town Capel meeting that I referenced earlier, but real quick, I did want to show you, this is a snapshot, a screenshot of that Old Town Community Conversation page that we talked about. And so, I've already talked to Hannah and JJ, and they're going to bring- they're going to add the survey results to this page. So, just so you're aware of- of where that exists on our webpage, so. Um, so, real quick, as you know, there was a town hall meeting about Old Town on March 30th. Attendees were seated at tables and asked to discuss and report back on four questions. And all those questions revolved around, has Old Town achieved what it was designed to achieve? And then, what do we want for the vision, um, for the future of Old Town Capel? So, we took all those notes, those table notes that we got, and, um, we created a list of issues that we saw recurring on the notes from the table groups. Um, tonight, I'll present those issues and some potential opportunities to address those issues. We'll go through each one, um, each issue one by one. Um, and again, the list of potential opportunities is not an exhaustive list by any means. They're just some potential ideas. Um, and again, just to remind you, there's pros and cons to every potential opportunity that we're going to talk about. We're not- staff is not advocating for any of the opportunities tonight. We're just providing information and ideas. Um, we'll be back in front of you at a later date to discuss, um, any kind of direction that y'all want to provide to us. So, now we'll go ahead and jump into those issues. So the first one is alcohol. So again, as you heard, individuals do not like the current alcohol rules in Capel, primarily because they don't allow for a winery, brewery, or bar without the sale of food today. So, most wineries and breweries in particular do not want the requirement of food sales. So, you just heard Ashley speak about, um, our current regulations and how those current regulations can be changed. So, our greatest opportunity on this is a citizen-initiated, um, election, local election, in order to change our current regulations. The next item that we heard several times was residential. So numerous tables mentioned that there's too much residential in Old Town Capel. So, unless city council's interested in eliminating our current housing options as it becomes available, there are limited opportunities to consider. But some of the things that are potential, we could look at buying properties surrounding the current area and expand the boundaries of Old Town to even the mix of uses and to provide opportunities for new uses as redevelopment occurs. Preservation of buildings. Um, the desire to preserve old buildings and retain the old in Old Town was a statement repeated by several tables. So, to help staff, we must first have clarification on what the city wants to see with preservation. Is that saving buildings or is it preserving the character? So that would be something that we would have to have a discussion about. Um, and then from there, there would be a potential opportunity for us to discuss and create a consensus around what qualifies for pres- for preservation, so that it helps us as we are faced with that discussion at future- at a future date again. Our next item is vibrancy and activation. A few tables included some type of comment about making the area more vibrant with more nightlife and activation of the area. And then you saw that again on the survey results. So some potential opportunities to explore could be increasing events in the area, as well as expand, once again, expanding the boundaries of Old Town Capel, buying surrounding buildings and creating an entertainment area. So, um, again, Jessica and her team have done quite a bit of work on kind of preliminary numbers on what it would cost to activate the area more, which we won't go into tonight, unless y'all have specific questions, but that's- that's just an idea. Then retail businesses and restaurants. So, as you saw in the survey results, restaurants is one of the greatest desires. And that's, again, what we heard that night at the community conversation. So that included everything from destination and specialty retail, to a greater variety of, um, retail, to simply just more retail. And so, there was also a strong desire for more food options, and that was supported, again, in the survey. So, you heard a presentation from Retail Coach that night. And it made it clear in the presentation that the Old Town area is not a natural location for retail and restaurants due to the lack of trip generations, visibility, surrounding rooftops, et cetera. So, um, some potential opportunities to attract some- to attract retail and restaurants that would not naturally locate in Old Town Capel. There is an opportunity to incentivize businesses to supplement their business, to activate the area more with community events, and try to drive more people to the area so that retail and restaurant can be supported. I will just tell you, in our conversations with restaurants, that is, there is not a tremendous amount of interest in Old Town right now, so there would be a need for something. Um, there was also mentioned from a few tables about a food truck court in Old Town Capel, and then you saw that again in the survey as well. So, staff has included a budget package to fund a food truck court, both for the infrastructure and operations. And so that's in next year's budget that city council will get to see. So if y'all are interested, that is in your budget for next year, to consider pursuing that opportunity. Nightlife, um, again, there was a general consensus from the attendees that they supported activities that drew a crowd in the evening. Um, wineries and breweries were specifically brought up as something the community desires. So expanding the boundaries is an option to provide greater visibility and access off of Freeport Parkway, and to provide an entertainment area of Old Town Capel that might remove that activity away from the residents more to provide, um, less of an impact on the homes that are existing today. Limited space. Um, a few tables expressed that they felt the Old Town Capel area was too small, and therefore, there wasn't enough space remaining to make a significant difference in uses. So once again, a potential opportunity is to expand the boundaries of Old Town Capel to incorporate buildings on the south and west side that can be redel- redeveloped at a future date. Affordability. Um, this comment was made in reference to both buying and leasing space in Old Town, as well as renting meeting space for a temporary event. So, as you all know, the city does not control lease or sale prices for non-city facilities. Um, so, again, one opportunity for the city to help in this area is to incentivize businesses, um, which would help cut down their property taxes or provide a rebate of taxes paid. Another opportunity is to provide, um, spaces for pop-up retail, so that businesses do not have to invest in real property to operate their business down there. And then, for the temporary event space, the best opportunity is for the city to study rental rates in other communities to see if our rates are comparable at this time. Streetscape amenities and seasonal decorations came up. And so, there was just a mention that there's a lack of streetscape amenities and seasonal direction- decorations down there. So, really, this is just a budgeting decision. The city council wants to add these streetscape amenities, such as trash cans and benches, um, as well as seasonal decorations in the area. That's really just a budgeting decision if- if we want to pursue that. Um, there were also, um, comments made about both traffic and pedestrian concerns. So, several tables mentioned that they were concerned about pedestrian safety and the traffic concerns down there. And so, again, Old Town is- is a u- unique space from most traditional residential neighborhoods, because we have on-street parking, we have angle parking, we have a mix of uses beyond just residential, and a greater volume of activity that most residential neighborhoods don't typically have. And so, the roads are two lanes surrounding the area, um, which gives people the confidence that they can cross the road at any point on the street, which does create some concerns about safety. So, um, like any of these items, we would- we would have to do a little further investigation to figure out what area needs specific fixes, um, so that we can take steps to alleviate some of these concerns. But a few of the options to consider include adding more flash and crosswalks, eliminating on-street parking on Bethel Road, um, studying our current truck route ordinance to see if it needs to be changed. If you're aware of our truck or- uh, truck route ordinance right now, we really only have two streets that trucks can drive on, um, unless they're going to make a delivery. So that's something we could look at to see if there is a better way to do our truck ordinance. Truck route ordinance, I'm sorry. And then, the other thought is, once again, kind of expanding those boundaries and creating more activity on the perimeter of Old Town, so that you're not driving traffic, as much traffic into the center of Old Town like it is today, where the majority of the residential resides. Visibility and signage. A few tables mentioned concern that there's a lack of signage and a lack of visibility for the area. So, we have a great opportunity to promote the area through the Discover Capel campaign. So that's- that's something that's available to us today. Um, there's also an opportunity to make some policy changes to allow for off-premise signage. Um, we- staff has presented some options to you all in the past, which included banners and digital signage. And at that time, it just wasn't the right time to pursue those, but that's maybe something that could be revisited if that's something that city council was interested in exploring. Um, finally, art. So attendees, um, expressed that they really enjoy the art that's currently provided in Old Town Capel, and they'd like to see more art down there. And so, um, we have several murals that exist in the area today, and so, the city could encourage additional murals down there. The amount of sculptures in the area could be increased. And then, possibly, um, one option is for, um, staff to explore an art district designation for the area as well. the area as well. So this is a lot of information tonight, and like I said, tonight, we are just presenting the information. We're not making any kind of recommendations, and we're not looking for any type of direction tonight. So, we want you to have time to kind of digest all of this information, you've received a lot tonight, and then we'll be back in front of you at retreat, see if there was anything that really resonated with you that you want to explore further and to give us direction on. So, with that, we're happy to answer, or I'm happy to answer any questions about the things that we've talked about tonight. Matt will answer any questions you have.
Counsel?
John? Working on visibility and signage, what's happening?
I thought we talked about that before, about maybe even taking advantage of all this traffic that goes through, like, Beltline and, other roads, to try to.
We, yes. We have something that the public works, I guess it's public works if you do the presentation to you about, about a couple of six-lane banners, basically, the, kind of like what's on Beltline and Addison. There's a, it's a pretty hefty price tag, just do the things, but yes, sir, we do that, but something that we'll present to you on that. There's, I think, is it Beltline and Freeport, or is it?
Matt, actually, so, really, Matt getting into this question.
I know Beltline, one of them, South Beltline.
Yeah, so let's see, yeah, so it was, uh.
Or Sandy Lake.
See, you meant banners, Freeport and Bethel and Denton Town in southwestern.
Okay. The two lo.
Those are two locations.
The two locations, right. Right. So, yes, there'll be a presentation to y'all. I don't know off the top of my head, I just know that when I heard it, it was a hefty price tag because of safety and security issues. Secure as far as you got traffic going underneath it, it's got to keep it safe. Can't be done, just.
For a long-term.
Looking at long-term, I know we just talked about banner, and secure-wise, but I know there are some places where they actually, some sort of a structure where you could actually attach it and not be, and I guess the cost of every time you put up a banner, right?
Yes, we would be contracting for somebody to do that for us, because we're not going to be doing that.
No, but I mean, like, there'd be some sort of a, I guess, support structure or something?
Yes, that's, that's the reason why the price tag got hefty. It's just not a, just a single wire on two poles, it's more than that.
So, some years ago, we had discussed digital signage in the area, and that, the council, we at that time turned it down, so.
Are we allowed to use that, the bridge, the dark?
To my knowledge, I don't think we're going to be allowed to hang anything on that bridge.
Really?
I don't think so. They're very, they're very restrictive territory. Yeah. That's their bridge.
Now, in fairness, we have not asked.
Well, I mean, is this a nice advertising place, too, sir?
Yeah, but that's, yes.
No.
It's like Tech Dot doesn't allow most cities to hang something off their bridges over the interstate. The dark has the same kind of. I know.
So we will be hearing more from you at our retreat.
Yes, sir, we, I want to.
Well, yes, we're going to be there June 16th, is that right, day, Friday night? But really, the ask is, did you take a look at the survey? You kind of take a look, study this a little bit more, just so you have a better, if there's any questions, please let us know. Because I think there just has to be some real clarity to understand, while granted, it's a citizen-driven process, you just have to understand what those options are as they're presented. And then the information that Mindy's presented tonight, again, all this is on the webpage, we'll have the links to it as well. And as she said, the question is, okay, we heard, we had the town hall, you know, we had the discussion, we've had the survey, we have this information. For y'all, what do next steps look like for y'all, right, in the process? What are things that, hey, we'd like to prioritize? Let's, let's, let's look at this, this, and this, and give us direction in terms of what's important. Understanding this is a long, we got a short-term issue to generate activity, and we got a long-term vision for what we're trying to accomplish, right?
Jim?
Within the context of the concerns about public safety, have we ever had a pedestrian involved accident with a motor vehicle in Old Town?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, we'll have to ask, I'm not that proud of either.
Well, you just need to get, keep people from walking down the middle of the street would help a lot. Sorry, personal beef. We'll find out. Anybody have anything else for Mindy? All right, well, thank you very much. Any comments before we close the meeting? Well, in that case, there be no further business before this council, we are adjourned at 8:16 PM.